Good evening and welcome to the special city council meeting of December 3rd, 2013. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Salazar.
Here.
Vice Mayor O'Connell.
Here.
Mayor Ruane.
Here.
Councilmember Medina.
Here.
Councilmember Ibera.
Here.
And City Manager Connie Jackson, would you lead us in the pledge, please?
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our next item is item three, public comment on items not on this agenda. It is the council's policy to refer matters raised in this forum to staff or investigation under action where appropriate. The Brown Act prohibits the council from discussing our act upon any matter not agendized pursuant to state law. Would anyone like to address the council?
Yes, please.
Please state your name and street.
Yes, Marty Medina, Garden Avenue, 2013 city council candidate. I want to apologize for missing the last city council meeting. I was out of town. I promised to take a vacation regardless of the election outcome. But I'm here tonight to publicly congratulate Councilmen Ibarra and Medina for their reelection. It was a good race. I want to also acknowledge the effort of candidate Andrew Mason. And although only 20 percent of the registered voters cast their ballots, I respect the voter's choice. This is what America's about. You get a chance to say something, vote for who you want. If it doesn't work out, well, you try again, but at least I'm here to acknowledge and thank everybody for their support. The split in the votes for the incumbents and myself, the incumbents Andrew and myself, were approximately 61 percent to 39 percent. I'm hoping the council seriously considers ways to reduce our utility rates. As you know, that was my primary stance, and I know we can do this, but we just have to do things differently. And I know it's your night tonight, but I have to thank my family for the effort and support they provided for me with Jeanette and my son Max, and for my brothers, sisters, nieces, nephew, and everybody else, and especially to the 1,764 voters who took a chance and voted for me. So with that, I just wanted to congratulate Councilman Ibarra and Medina.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to address the council? We'll move right to number four, conduct of business. 4A is adopt a resolution certifying the results of the November 5th, 2013 general municipal election. Carol?
Hi, I'd like to declare the results of the, um, I'm sorry, I'd like to declare the results that we received from the county last night at 6:17. And these are the official results of our election that we held on November 5th. There were 28 precincts that voted. Our registration in San Bruno was 20,039 people. Out of those 20,039, only 4,450 voted, so that represented 22.21 percent. Our mayor, Jim Ruane, received 3,784 votes. Rico Medina, E. Medina, received 2,526 votes. Ken Ibarra received 2,239 votes. Marty Medina received 1,764 votes. And Andrew T. Mason received 1,229. John Marty, our city treasurer, received 3,690. And Carol Bonner, me, our city clerk, received 3,796. Those are the results, and these will be filed on file in my office. And if you have any questions, I'll be glad to answer them.
Any questions or action on this resolution?
I'll introduce the resolution.
Vice Mayor O'Connell.
Aye.
Councilmember Salazar.
Aye.
Councilmember Medina.
Aye.
Councilmember Ibera.
Aye.
Mayor Ruane.
Aye.
4B administer oath of office and present certificates of election to reelected officials.
Jim, if you could step forward, please?
And I'm going to have the proud duty of swearing you in.
Thank you.
Please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, Carol Bonner.
I, Carol Bonner.
Do hereby solemnly swear.
Do hereby solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend.
That I will support and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies.
Against all enemies.
Foreign and domestic.
Foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States.
To the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely.
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation.
Without any mental reservation.
Or purpose of evasion.
Or purpose of evasion.
And that I will well and faithfully discharge.
And that I will well and faithfully discharge.
The duties which I am about to enter.
The duties with which I'm about to enter.
By the authority granted to me as the elections official.
Say your name.
Jim Ruane, as the mayor of the city of San Bruno, I hereby declare that Carol Bonner has been installed as city clerk of the city of San Bruno for a four-year term, and that she is ready, able, and willing to take office. I proudly present to you this certificate of election. Congratulations.
Thank you. Well, I talk louder than anybody here, I really do. I'd like to thank everybody. It's been a roller coaster year, and if we look back on the year, we didn't think that I'd make it, and I'm here. And I'd like to thank my husband Jesse, my three kids Keith, Cory, and Casey, my daughter-in-law Nancy, four of my grandchildren are here, Amanda, Charlie, Kaylee, and Connor, Jacob couldn't make it, my brother-in-law Jim, and my sister-in-law Kathy. And I'd also like to mention Joan Burwell. Joan Burwell comes to city hall every single day, and if she doesn't come, she calls. And she is just a very, very happy person, and I want to acknowledge that. And I want to thank you all for voting for me. Okay, John Marty. Could you please raise your right hand and repeat after me? I, John Marty.
I, John Marty.
Do hereby solemnly swear.
Do hereby solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend.
That I will support and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies.
Against all enemies.
Foreign and domestic.
Foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith.
That I will bear true faith.
And allegiance.
And allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States.
To the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely.
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation.
Without any mental reservation.
Or purpose of evasion.
Or purpose of evasion.
And that I will well and faithfully discharge.
And I will well and faithfully discharge.
The duties which I'm about to enter.
The duties which I'm about to enter.
You can lower your hand. By the authority granted to me as the elections official for the city of San Bruno, I hereby declare that John Marty has been installed as city treasurer of the city of San Bruno for a four-year term, and that he is ready, able, and willing to take office. I proudly present to you this certificate of election. Congratulations. And this is yours, too.
Thank you, Carol. First, I would like to thank all the voters for placing their trust in me. It's an honor and a privilege to serve as your treasurer. I do truly enjoy the job. I'd also like to acknowledge the finance staff with whom I work. Terrific group of people. The city is very well served by them. I'd like to acknowledge the city council. I enjoy working with all of them. Goes to say, I have to acknowledge our lovely and talented city clerk with whom we all know can swear in someone with the best of them. Thank you all.
Okay, Rico Medina, please. Are you ready? Okay, raise your right hand. I, Rico E. Medina.
I, Rico E. Medina.
Do hereby solemnly swear.
Do hereby solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend.
I will support and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies.
Against all enemies.
Foreign and domestic.
Foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States.
To the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely.
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation.
Without any mental reservation.
Or purpose of evasion.
Or purpose of evasion.
And that I will well and faithfully discharge.
And that I will well and faithfully discharge.
The duties I am about to enter.
The duties in which I'm about to enter.
You can lower your hand. By the authority granted to me as the elections official for the city of San Bruno, I do hereby declare that Rico E. Medina has been installed as council member of the city of San Bruno for a four-year term, and that he is ready, able, and willing to take office. I proudly present to you this certificate of election. Congratulations. This is all yours.
So I'm going to break the trend as far as the quickness and brevity of the conversation, but it's just to build up for Ken. So here we are again, but I want to, of course, offer many thanks, but we will. And most importantly, I want to also acknowledge that we have two school board members, one who is elect, John, and obviously who has now been elected, who was appointed. Pat, I appreciate your presence, being here, and I know Ken and I plan to be at yours as well. I want to thank the committee that helped and supported me. There are folks that give so much of their time to this community already, and they found it within their heart to go ahead and offer their time to help support me and keep me connected to what's going on in this community. Of course, Laura, Polly, Lori, Jim, Jessica, Greg, Robert, and Pam. I want to thank each and every one of you for keeping me on track and sometimes keeping me in check. I want to also point out Laura, for Laura has, believe it or not, more passion than I do, if people can believe it. And not only does she keep going and is a survivor in many ways, but her perseverance, her being here tonight with all that's going on, I want to thank you and appreciate it. I also want to thank my family and friends. And here I have Vico, Marie, Grace, Donna, Laura, Summer, Ryan, Sarah, and Carolyn Livinggood, who obviously has known me since a child, and so I want to thank her, too, because obviously she's helped me along the way. I also want to acknowledge Marty Medina and Andrew Mason for, they ran for office, and we all know that that's not an easy task. And it's my belief that people don't run because they have extra time on their hands. They run because they care for the city they live in. So I want to acknowledge them for the race they ran, and I look forward, as I invited both of them, to sit and meet with them, to hear what they heard as they were on the campaign. I want to hear what their folks that voted for them or those that they talked to at the door. I also want to recognize Mr. Young, Keith Young, who I've come to know and admire, who is here tonight, and I asked him, this is a gentleman who, on his block on Linden Avenue, who one person can make a difference, and this is what this city is about, and he took an area in a neighborhood as he came to this podium and asked for help from the city. And with the help of the staff and the police department, that neighborhood on Linden is a better place, with a beautiful email I received during the election on how the kids are out playing and the parents are much happier. And I say that story and acknowledge him, not for his effort alone, of course, the neighborhood, but that one person in this town does and can make a difference. When I ran in 2005, I went around and spoke to many folks, and that enthusiasm and that drive that led me to have when I entered into office in '05, I will never forget. In '09, as you may remember, Ken and I ran unopposed, didn't have to go out, obviously, to that degree, but this time there was an election. And this time, it afforded me that opportunity to go out and hear from all the folks in the areas of town, to hear of their comments, of their concerns, and yes, their criticisms. And there were quite a few, shall we say, across all areas. But what that has done is frankly, has given me a shot in the arm and a kick in the butt to want to continue to reach out. I want to still be the eyes, ears, and voice for the residents of this community, and now more than ever, I think we need to communicate and involve our community on what our plans are and what their future holds. We need to go beyond just this room and the council meetings. We need to go out there into the community. We need to be out there at their homes, in their neighborhoods, or at a coffee shop. Therefore, starting next year, I'm going to avail myself and be there to any resident who wants to meet at any location in this community, not just at city hall, but if it need be at their home or in their local shop somewhere, I will do that so we can continue on the conversation that I have heard and hear what they bring to the table and what they want us to do. I have heard from many of the residents where we fall short, and I want to help to bridge that gap, and I'm hoping that that continued communication will do that. While I am fortunate, honored, and blessed to be reelected to city council to represent San Bruno, which I've called home my entire life, I know that that just being reelected is not enough, and I want to let the residents of this community know that I pledge to them to help move this city forward, to plan for its future, and together with their guidance, we together will make San Bruno a place that we all can be prepared for the future and be proud to call our home as we do today. It is my goal to make a difference in the time that I have, to leave things better than I find them today, to reach out to the community, and with them and their guidance and support, we as a council and as a community will plan that path, and we will make that future bright. Again, I want to thank each and every one of you. I want to thank the city that has meant so much and for all those who've helped me along the way. Again, we have a lot of work ahead of us, and I will tell you that I committed to myself for this next year in 2014 that we will be making a difference in this community. Thank you.
Ken Ibera. If you could raise your right hand and repeat after me, please?
I, Ken Ibera.
I, Ken Ibera.
Do hereby solemnly swear.
Do hereby solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend.
That I will support and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies.
Against all enemies.
Foreign and domestic.
Foreign and domestic.
That I will bear truth, faith, and allegiance.
That I will bear truth, faith, and allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States.
To the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely.
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation.
Without any mental reservation.
Or purpose of evasion.
Or purpose of evasion.
And that I will well and faithfully discharge.
And that I will well and faithfully discharge.
The duties which I'm about to enter.
The duties that I'm about to enter.
You can lower your hand. By the authority granted to me as the elections official for the city of San Bruno, I hereby declare that Ken Ibera has been installed as council member of the city of San Bruno for a four-year term, and that he is ready, able, and willing to take office. I proudly present to you this certificate of election. Congratulations. And this is yours, too.
That was flawless. Thank you. Thank you, Carol. Congratulations. And thank you for this special meeting. Why am I taking these off? It's special for us newly electeds and those who worked so hard to get us here, and special that we may publicly thank those who elected us. Let me first congratulate John Marty. There you are. Carol Bonner, Mayor Ruane, and my fellow councilman Rico Medina. I'd also like to acknowledge and congratulate Tom Moore, our San Mateo County Community College District trustee. Thanks for coming. Also, Pat Flynn, John Marino, San Bruno Park School District. Thank you again for coming.
I sat up on the dais to start this fifth term, and I can't help reflect on the first time I joined this council. It was 17 years ago in April, and I had the honor and pleasure to join Irene O'Connell, Chris Pallas, Jim Ruane, and Mayor Ed Simon. However, the most vivid moment was watching my father in the audience. It was a truly proud moment for him and our family. Little did we know that he would pass the following year. I fast forward to this year and faced with a challenging election, thanks to Marty Medina and Andrew Mason, but I received a giant boost of confidence when my mother, uncle, and grandmother attended my kickoff party, and that was a big surprise, although I'm sure they were excited to see my daughter and granddaughters also. And I thanked Lucy Mejia and Don Picos for a great party. So here I'm embarking on a new term at a time of economic recovery and potential and our 100th anniversary. I couldn't be more excited and proud to be a part of this community made up of dedicated city workers and, in my opinion, the best city council I can serve with. And I'm still here with Irene and Jim. I must mention that although this last term has been particularly challenging, I can't help but pay respects to the victims of September 9th, 2010, who have gone through so much and continued to deal with recovery. But let me first begin by thanking everyone that voted in this election. It is disturbing when only one in five voters actually casts a vote, so I thank those who took the time to exercise your right and your duty to your community. I clearly want to thank those who helped the campaign with their contributions. It was money well spent, and at the very least, it gave a boost to the post office. I especially want to thank those who have been both supporting our community along with my campaign, my friends in the Lions and Rotary Clubs, the schools, and those who are so supportive of Relay for Life San Bruno in curing cancer. Thank you to that wonderful group who helped with the 12,000 mailers, and you know who you are, especially Pam and Bob Rico. You guys are so valuable to this community, and I'm just so glad that we have become such good friends this last year. But more importantly, I thank the person I will never be able to thank enough, for she is the main reason why I'm here. She's my partner, my critic, and my confidence, and try as she does, she keeps me in line and out of trouble. Amy, I love you. Thank you. I'm almost done. I want to state in closing, as my colleague and my good friend Rico stated, that even though this is my fifth term, I have not and will not take this office for granted. I will work harder to engage in community, to listen to their needs, their comments, and their complaints, and do everything I can to take care of those needs and complaints. I will do my best to make the next four years the best four years I can give San Bruno. Thank you.
Jim Ruane.
This is kind of special to me. Jim and I have a relationship that's gone back for 34 years, and back in 1989, I ran for city clerk unsuccessfully, and Jim then got appointed to the Planning Commission, correct? And he's just been going strong ever since. So I am absolutely delighted to administer this oath of office to him. Could you please raise your right hand?
I, Jim Ruane.
I, Jim Ruane.
Do hereby solemnly swear.
Do hereby solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend.
That I will support and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies.
Against all enemies.
Foreign and domestic.
Foreign and domestic.
And that I will bear true faith and allegiance.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States.
To the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely.
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation.
Without any mental reservation.
Or purpose of evasion.
Or purpose of evasion.
And that I will well and faithfully discharge.
That I will well and faithfully discharge.
The duties which I'm about to enter.
The duties which I'm about to enter.
You can lower your hand. By the authority granted to me as the elections official for the city of San Bruno, I hereby declare that Jim Ruane has been installed as mayor of the city of San Bruno for a two-year term, and that he is ready, able, and willing to take office. I proudly present to you this certificate of election. Congratulations.
And that's yours.
Just a few words. First of all, good evening and welcome to all of you. My very first comment this evening will be to introduce my family. They have been by my side supporting me, and in turn, all of you, as I took over as your mayor four years ago. My son Jim and his wife Monica, and my three grandsons Gavin, Patrick, and Brendan, who were all born during my last 18 years on this council. My daughter Stephanie and her husband Dan, who have supported me throughout the last number of years and who both grew up in San Bruno. And of course, my wife and my best friend Noreen, my advisor, my confidant, and sounding board for so many issues, city and otherwise. I want to give my heartfelt thanks to our city manager Connie Jackson and her staff, and to all of the employees of the city of San Bruno. You have all been remarkable during a nationwide economic slowdown that has tested us all. I also want to congratulate my council, all of you, the newly electeds, and the ones that sit next to me up there, Carol and John. It's been a great team. And to the people of San Bruno, I thank you for your continued trust in me. It is difficult to put into words the respect I have for all of you. We have accomplished much over the last few years, and now that the economy seems to be turning around, it looks like we will finally have the resources to complete some of the things that have been on our back burner for so long. We have a serious interest in the old theater site on San Mateo Avenue, a ribbon to cut on the new Caltrain station in great separation after the first of the year, and a hotel developer onboard for one of the last pieces of buildable land in our city. And we are collaborating closely with other cities on much-needed consolidation of resources and services. We will finally get to enjoy some very positive events, not the least of which is our centennial. In 2014, San Bruno will celebrate its 100th birthday, and we have we have many exciting events planned, the first of which will be our soft kickoff this Thursday evening as part of our tree lighting ceremony in San Bruno Park. I encourage all of you to attend. We have some surprises for you. Then, of course, there's Glenview and our recovery and rebuilding efforts. We are well on our way, and my hope is that by the middle of next year, we will finally be completely rebuilt. People have often asked me, did you ever think when you were elected mayor? I tell them, you never know what you're dealt. And as I often tell the city manager, every day is a new adventure. The tragedy has taken me to Washington, DC, Denver, New Orleans, Las Vegas, New York, Sacramento, as well as many other speaking engagements throughout the Bay Area, and it's not over yet, not by a long shot. It is our legacy to make sure that what happened here never happens again anywhere else. I could go on and on, but in the interest of time, and after promising my grandson some cake and cookies, I just want to thank you all once again, from the bottom of my heart, for your confidence in me. I have worked very hard and will continue to do so. Thank you very much. One last item of business, and that's to select a vice mayor to serve a one-year term and approve annual reorganization of the city council. Carol?
Oops.
Where are we with our vice mayor? What is the protocol?
Okay. The vice mayor will be Rico E. Medina.
Oh, thank you.
And it's because he, it's been the longest, it's been the longest since he served as vice mayor, and that's how the Muni code reads. So Rico, you are our new vice mayor.
Would someone like to make that motion formally?
Someone.
Oops. Second.
Motion and second, all in the question? All in favor?
Aye.
Congratulations. This meeting is adjourned.